Good evening. This is Tuesday, November twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four, meeting of the Town of Berlin Planning Board. As preliminary matter, please note this meeting is being recorded and some of the attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks will be able to see you. The ugly band T-shirt you decided to wear tonight or anything you intend to or not, screen share on your computer. Anything that you broadcast will be captured and recorded forever and ever, and will wind up as a TikTok video to be shared amongst your neighbors and friends. This is Tom Sanford, Chair of the Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members of the Planning Board are present and can hear me prior to me calling the meeting to order. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. J Teach?
Here.
Timothy Wheeler?
Yeah.
Carol McDonald?
Here.
Thomas Andrew?
Here.
With a quorum of the board present, I call this meeting to order at seven thirty-seven P M. Tuesday, November twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four. This is an open meeting of the Planning Board being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, two thousand and twenty, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts due to the outbreak of the COVID-nineteen virus. Specific information and general guidelines for the remote participation by members of the public can be found on the Town of Berlin website. The governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location and allows and encourages us to participate remotely. For this meeting, the Planning Board is convening using the Zoom platform as posted on the agenda, which includes links for the general public to join this meeting. I'll introduce each speaker on the agenda after their concluding remarks. I'll invite each board member by name to provide any comment, questions, penetrating insight, and/or motions. Please hold all your insights until your name is called. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. Speak clearly just to ensure accurate minutes are recorded. For any response, please wait until you yield to the floor, state your name before speaking. If board members wish to engage in conversation with each other, please do so through me to avoid multiple conversations happening at the same time. Lastly, please note that each vote in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Thank you all for your understanding and cooperation. All right. So we have, uh, do we have any administrative matters that we need to take up between now and when our first contestant joins us?
Not that I'm aware of. Did anybody take minutes last time when I wasn't around?
Yes, I did. I, I, just before you came on, I couldn't, uh, remember the official name of the proponents of the Autism Center. And so I asked that. I just have to fill that in and I'll distribute the minutes tomorrow.
It is fill a need, right?
Fill a need. That's Katie.
Yeah.
Ken. Oh, Ken, something. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'll just do fill a need. I just, uh, I just needed the name, um. Anyway, so, so you'll see those tomorrow.
Cool.
Electronically, or you're gonna bring them around on?
No, like, uh, I was gonna send you a Word document electronically, which has the minutes in it. Is that?
Awesome.
Okay.
Cool.
Everyone's gonna watch the video and sitting by the pool and take notes.
I'll save you that. It'll save you that. You don't have to do that.
Yeah.
You okay, Mr. Sanford? You have a cold?
Um, I'm getting one. Yeah.
There's this new thing. You have a cold. Actually, when I went to Copenhagen, came back with a cold for one day, and then three or four days later, I started coughing and it lasted like four weeks.
Oh, thanks.
Did you test? Did, did you test for COVID?
I did, and I was negative, and I tested for the flu, and that was negative.
All right.
I went to the doctors today, so it's just a head cold.
Yeah.
Head case.
Well, I was at the doctors last week, and I got three vaccinations trying to get ahead of R K Junior.
Yeah, right?
Excellent. You can start stockpiling it.
Exactly.
So Jay, I researched, like you asked me to, for tiny homes. There actually was a tiny home that was built about, I think, a thousand B C, actually. Yeah, and it was, uh, it was about six feet wide and about twelve feet long.
Fill a need.
That's what I figured. It was, uh, just the, the base stones. There was no height. You couldn't tell the height or anything else. Had a nice mosaic of floor, though.
Well, there you go.
So.
Did you go see the Viking Museum and?
No, no, no. We went to, um, uh, uh, Turkey and, uh, Greece.
Oh, okay.
So.
Was it awesome?
Oh.
A lot of older stuff there.
Incredible. Incredible. Yeah.
What was Turkey like?
Uh, it was really cool. Um, so we, um, we landed, we, we took a cruise. Uh, and so we landed in, um, um, Capital Turkey. Good Lord, I can't even think.
Ankara. Ankara, yeah.
Anyways.
Ankara.
Uh, well, actually, we didn't, it wasn't Ankara that we went to, but.
Istanbul.
Turkey. Istanbul, thank you.
Yeah.
We went to Istanbul and, um, that was where we started. We were there for a full day, um, and then we jumped on the boat and then, uh, went down. Uh, Troy, we couldn't stop at because it was too rough, and they send you in by tenders. So they, they just, they, they bypassed that. We went to Ephesus, which was where the, um, birthplace of, um, democracy, I guess, if you will. They had the Library of Ephesus, and they had, uh, a lot of Roman influence, and they had the, uh, Hammabel Road, if you will, from where the, uh, the center of the Ephesus was, all the way down to where the harbor was. It was about a mile long. And, uh, that, they said, was where, um, Cleopatra and Mark Antony had strode up there. So it just was weird to say, I was, you know, walking down a road that people in history that far back.
Wow.
Yeah. Yeah, it was amazing. Absolutely amazing. And then we went from there, um, to, uh, Rhodes. We went from Rhodes to Crete, and then from Crete over to Athens, and we stayed in Athens for, uh, a couple of days afterwards. Athens is an amazing city. Um, it was way hillier than I thought. Um, it is really mountainous.
Yep.
All around there. But that was, that was a cool, cool city. We, uh, we saw a whole bunch of stuff there, and it was just, uh, it was amazing. Amazing.
That's awesome.
Yeah. Yeah, we had a blast.
Awesome.
Yep.
Well, since we're filling dead air, and you mentioned Mark Antony, many years ago, Joni and I did a Valentine's Day dinner, and we had about, uh, ooh, fifteen or twenty, uh, limericks that were riddles about famous couples in history.
Okay.
And one of them was, now I'll tell you a story that's sadder. His love was bit by an adder. I guess you can bet he was pretty upset, but I'll wager that Caesar was madder.
I do have an email from Katie Page, who's the Flood Plane Management Specialist. I was gonna try to meet with her and go over the stuff she wants to put in our bylaw. Does anybody want to participate in that?
When are you planning this?
Let's see here. I don't know. She doesn't tell me when she's available.
Right. I mean, I think it's, I think it's a good idea. That helps.
Yeah.
We don't have a list. We gotta put this in, right?
She already sent us a model and comments on our floodplain content in our bylaw, which I think I sent around a while ago.
Yeah, you did.
Not sure.
Well, let, let me know. Wednesdays are bad for me because I go into Boston most weeks, um. But other than that, I'm working at home, and if I know a week or so ahead of time, I can usually, uh, block out some time.
Okay.
Jane, of course, has suggested that we look at our floodplain bylaw in general, so working with Katie, is that her name?
Katie, yeah.
Yeah, um, this, this is timely. It helps.
Yeah.
But she's not gonna globalize. She's just gonna say we have to insert X, Y, and Z, right?
Uh, I believe so. I'm just looking at it right now. Yes, it's got, there's a whole bunch of comments that next to our bylaw.
Yeah. So, I mean, that's the type of stuff we could share with Jane. I don't think we've heard from E E A yet. In regard to, in regard to the grant.
Oh.
And Tim, have we had any luck reaching out to, uh, Hudson and their, um?
Marlborough?
Uh, sorry, yes, Marlborough.
No, but I'm, I'll try again after Thanksgiving here.
Okay.
And now, and you know, it also seemed to make sense if we did get funds from E E A that we would look at that overlay and get perhaps Central Mass to help us with some of that conversation with Marlborough.
Mm-hmm.
And I spoke with Kristen, and she said, um, she felt it made sense for us to seek Town Council's, um, advice regarding that overlay. And and I said that I would share that with you guys and that she, Kristen would like to be part of that conversation because she's met with the mayor and Meredith and Liz Kelly a couple times, so she'd like to continue to anticipate as.
Well, if, if you would like me to put together a request to counsel, because I, I think I pretty much understand what the effect is, so I could do the, uh, request saying, this is the way we understand it. Please, you know, confirm or contradict.
Yeah, so we could, we could send that off to Heather and then, um, you or I, or you and somebody else could meet with Kristen and Heather, um, and then sort of review. It probably makes sense to get our ducks in a row a little bit before we talk to Marlborough too much.
Yeah, I mean, I think, uh, you know, the thought with Marlborough was to sort of get them thinking, um.
Where they stand.
Yeah, well, where they stand, but also, you know, thinking about changes to the overlay um, or restrictions in the underlying zone to, you know, to encourage stuff that isn't sort of bottom feeding on it and that would, uh, be symbiotic with uh, the sort of core of the mall, the not, you know, basically looking at what, what can you do with the major platforms uh, in ways that would support, um, you know, a, uh, you know, a vital use of that retail restaurant space that's in between them. You know, that, that was my thought for the topic. Um, and so just, it's a very, I think it's a high enough level that we don't have to do a whole lot of homework, but, uh, you know, I think that would be, uh, that would be the topic I'd love to see us discuss.
I agree.
I did see, um, an article in the Community Advocate recently about why our suggestion of a sports center fell flat. Apparently, a giant pickleball place is opening over at the airport in Marlborough.
Oh.
Like, yeah. It, it like, either it is open or it's opening very soon.
Mm-hmm. Well, there are other sports, you know, that.
Jay, Jay, you, you're very soft.
Yeah, Tom's suggesting when an airport, um, is what I think Jay's referring to. It's already happening there. Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, the airport is gone, and there's like a, uh, park full of, you know, other things.
Yeah. Yes, but at that location, uh.
So there may be something to moving the airport to the mall.
Yeah.
That's, that's where the, um, Stevens Foundation was trying to put in his museum in. And Marlborough was at the, where the airport used to be. So they've been working on developing that for some time now.
Well, we don't have to, uh, put an airport in for planes. We can just put it in for helicopters like we had it.
There you go.
Yeah.
What time did I put her in for? Tom, was it seven forty-five or eight o'clock?
Eight. Eight o'clock.
Yeah.
I always leave the agenda to the last minute, and it's a huge panic to try to get it.
Well, sometimes you end up with an A and R that you wanna just tuck in, you know, and get it done with before you end up with a longer conversation, so.
Yeah.
We don't have anything at town meeting we need to take a position on, do we?
As long as they don't rob our money.
The only, uh, the.
Switch money.
The, the fifth modification to the development agreement, did, did we wanna chime in on that at all for River Bridge? It's basically saying they want to extend the opportunity to purchase the land for a dollar until two thousand and twenty-six.
And what do we have to give up for that?
Yeah.
It's actually the, I believe, the town asking for it this time.
Okay.
Because there's been a bit of a snafu with the wells.
Oh.
Which is also the other, one of the other articles. Um, so in do, when Town Council started doing, putting together the language for the P N S, um, it was realized that so the conservation restriction that is on that property covers, the, the wells are in the, within the conservation restriction. And there is language in the C R that says whoever owns the land owns the wells and can be the only ones to operate the wells. So, um, there, the, the town is asking at town meeting for modification of that lang, just that language, um.
Okay, and, and to what? To what?
To allow, to, just to say that who, that the owner of the land does not have to be the ones that operate the wells.
But it leaves it open that we could operate them if we were so interested.
Hmm, maybe. I don't have my warrant.
No, no, I'll take a, okay, I'll have to take a look at the warrant. Yeah.
I, I don't see why we wouldn't wanna have control over those.
Yeah.
Well, if, if, if we are the only ones who can operate them and we are going to sell water to any of the neighbors, then we, then the town has to create a water department.
Yeah, no, I think, I think it's a good idea. I just, I just would like it to be, um, open enough that at some point in the future, if we wanted to do that, that would still be allowable, but not presumptive anymore.
Right. I, I'm, I would imagine, uh, I haven't heard that we are giving away that, right?
Mm-hmm. I'll take a look at it. I'll take a look at it. Yeah.
Right. So, but because it needs to go to town meeting, so Conservation Commission had to vote, um, to agree to the modification, which we did after some long conversation, um. Now, then it has to be voted at a town meeting, and then it has to be approved by the state. So all of these things are gonna take time, so that's why the modification is.
Got it. Got it.
See? Hang out with me. I'll let you know.
Yeah, I love it. It's great.
Uh. So, but that is what's going on with that, so. Uh. Because otherwise, if the town doesn't create a water department, then the town can't sell, can't do anything with the wells. So.
Sorry, say that again?
If the, if, if the modification is not approved, the, and the town chooses to not create a whole new department to operate the wells and sell the wa, the water and all of that, um, then the wells just sit unused.
Gotcha.
And you couldn't do it through the highway department, huh?
There's only three people who work for the highway department.
But you're gonna, if you're gonna create a water department, you're gonna hire somebody anyways. Hire somebody and put them in the highway department.
Yeah, you, you certainly could, um. But yeah, no, I understand what they're getting at, and, um, I presume River Bridge is, finds that acceptable?
I presume since the mod, since the request is on the, on the warrant.
Yeah, I'm sure they cleared it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Now, we're, working from home and, uh, and being very busy. I don't get around much anymore, and so thank you.
You're welcome.
They're doing us a favor, so we can't make them take down the package door.
Yeah, right.
Uh, keep that thing there until it falls down hundred years.
Are you kidding? It'll be there when the Acropolis is crumbled.
No, because I bet they made the concrete blocks at, at the little factory down the street.
Right. So, but I guess to Tim's point, do, does the Planning Board wanna take a position on that? Or? Not?
Well, let's take, let's take a, I'll take a look at it. We can put that on the agenda for, uh, another meeting. As they say, I think that, uh, as long as it is.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have another meeting before town meeting.
Oh, sorry. When is town? Yeah, that's right.
Town meeting's the ninth, and we meet, excuse me, on the tenth.
Okay, oh, right, um. Well, perhaps, um.
We could post a meeting for the ninth.
Yeah, we could.
In case you came in and said, you know, maybe we wanna do this or that, you know?
Yeah.
Oh. All right, awesome. Uh, it's.
C M R.
Yeah, we, yeah, posted for, uh, for right at the town meeting, so if we go, we can huddle in the corner and do it.
Yeah.
Um.
So I move that we meet on the ninth of December at what time?
Town meeting is at six.
Six thirty?
Wait, wait. I have town meeting here. Is that starting at six o'clock?
I have Monday, December ninth, two thousand and twenty-four, at six thirty.
Oh, okay, good.
Six fifteen.
So we need it six fifteen?
Yeah, that sounds fine.
Uh, second.
And a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask you to go. Carol McDonald?
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler?
Aye.
Jay Teach?
Aye.
Thomas Andrew?
Aye.
Tom Sanford, aye. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you. Now, it is eight oh one, so.
And we have I presume to be Jane.
Hey, Jane.
Thank you for having me again.
You're welcome.
Um, so I was hoping, uh, you might have some comments and feedback, um, on the zoning diagnostic or, uh, any questions that I can answer for you. I know from my end, there were just a couple of items, um, from one of the old studies that I was hoping I could get some updated information on some of those priority development area projects, um, and making sure that the status of all those was up to date.
So you had Solomon Pond Mall, River Bridge, Carter Highland Street property, the limited business zone on Taylor Road and Highland Commons.
Mm-hmm.
It's the five. And wh, we, when we were talking earlier, um, because we're currently looking at the Solomon Pond Mall again seriously and um, Town Council, we've been given permission to chat with Town Council, so Tom Andrew is gonna try to draft up some thoughts for Town Council to ruminate on, and we'll continue to reach out to Meredith in hopes that the Economic Development Coordinator and Marlborough might meet with us, but it does seem as though it, let's say that this, the E E A grant were to come in, um, or even if it doesn't, we may want to have you help us. This is the thought that I've got, I guess, that we haven't talked about this. It, it seems as though a priority for the annual town meeting in May is to deal with the, the Solomon Pond Mall
Okay.
overlay, regardless of whether we get the E E A grant or not, and that because you've looked at it, it might pay us to have you participate in some of these discussions. And if we do get the E E A grant, I still think we probably wanna deal with Solomon Pond Mall at the May town meeting, even though a lot of what we might do with zoning might take, you know, well through twenty-five into twenty-six.
Agreed.
So in look, in looking at those prioritized, you know, those areas that we prioritized in the four ninety-five initiative way back in two thousand and twelve, the, the mall is still top of the list, I guess, um, as the priority development area. River Bridge is I suppose you'd say it's eighty, eighty percent done now, um. They, they, they're limping along and have come to us with housing ideas, but I mean, it's we, we're not too intrigued with housing there. I don't know, as we need to devote a lot of attention to that until they come in with some other proposals, but that's the status of it. It's not complete. There's still some commercial pads that are left.
Okay.
Highland must have been um, Highland Ridge.
Oh.
Is that right?
Well, Highland Commons is still not a hundred percent built out. Well, Highland Commons is still not a hundred percent built out.
No, I'm talking about Carter and Highland Street property.
Oh.
That's not nineteen Carter, is it?
No, so the, but the Carter and Highland Street intersection, the. The, the Highland Ridge property is in that northwest quadrant of that intersection. It's not immediately on it, but it's, so I suspect that's what we must have been referring to. Because it was actively being pursued for quite a while. Um, and that's done, although Carolyn.
It's, it's. Um, it has now been turned over to the residents. The trust that the residents have to operate it, so um, it's totally built out. I believe the last two units are under agreement, if not actually sold.
Oh, wow.
Yep.
So that was.
Some conservation issues, but.
So that ended up being an O, an over fifty-five senior overlay district that um, is done, basically.
Yep.
Okay.
And then the, the limited business zone on Taylor Road. Is still empty and every so often it changes hands and. But there's, there's no construction or no proposals before us.
Okay.
And I think it, you, you've got Highland Commons under construction eighty percent complete, I. Um, there's still, you know, it may be ninety percent complete, but um. There's still pads, there's a pad in Berlin that's next to BJ's, that's what, forty thousand square feet, um.
And the one that's halfway down that, the hill there, is that? That might be Hudson there.
I think that's all Hudson, and then the one over by Panera that hasn't been built is, is all Hudson.
Right.
So for all intents and purposes, on our side, there's forty thousand square feet, if. If the whole project was eight hundred thousand square feet and. Half of it was in Berlin, then ten percent of what's in Berlin still hasn't been built. I, maybe twenty percent of the whole project hasn't been built. It's, that's still a safe number, I guess.
Okay. Very good. Thank you for that update.
So, I, I. Um, I mean, is that the logical thing to say about the mall that we, we do need to address it for the town meeting in May?
Yep.
Whether we get the E A grant or not.
Yep.
Which made me wonder about, are there other parts of the diagnostic that. We would wanna move forward with, regardless of whether we got the E A grant. And, and at the same time, deal with for the annual town meeting, one of which might be. Um, accessory dwelling unit language, uh. That's incorporated into what you've mentioned here, but. You know, I think that's one timely topic that.
Yeah, no, ab- absolutely. That would be, that was the other one I was thinking of.
The cottage housing piece can, I, I don't think we've, we're prepared to digest that between now and. February, so. I, but I do think we can deal with Solomon Pond Mall and ADUs, but I was wondering if we had a couple other. Topics that came high on the list that we'd wanna address before the. The annual town meeting.
Signage?
Signage as.
Well, if we're doing a diagnostic, let's see how our language is for the, for our sign language. We have it multiple spots. Cuz we have mobile A's, plus we have it in the, you know, rest of the town. And then we've added, um, well, we've amended it to include some, um, you know, LED signs.
Right.
So. I don't know if that's a heavy lifting on.
That's unreasonable between now and, is it May?
Yeah, we'd have to have the language for the warrant pretty well tied up by the middle of February.
Okay.
So, so what we're saying is that an evaluation of our sign section in our bylaw. For a potential rewrite.
That can be done.
Yep, right, and then the ADUs. And then the mall.
And I was gonna recommend the ADUs also, and we continue to meet with the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, and they expect to. Be putting together some guidance for communities, um, as we get closer to February second, when it goes into effect. So hopefully, before long, we do have the guidance from them that will. Hopefully, maybe even a model bylaw that.
What?
Well, if they create the models, then hopefully the Attorney General's Office will approve it.
Right?
So.
In general. The other parts of the. Comments you made that appealed to me most. Which doesn't, not, not in regard to a May town meeting, but just in general. The whole stormwater management section, which we've never addressed, and it seems like. So towns tend to have a, a, a section in their zoning bylaw that deals with stormwater management. Is that what? You've seen, or how does it, how is it?
Historically, um, a lot of the zoning bylaws are decades old. And um, they're now coming around to addressing it, especially. Uh, with all of the sustainability requirements, and some communities have MS four permits through the EPA. And um, DCR, and so they're needing to make amendments to their zoning in order to comply with. Their stormwater permits with EPA. With things like, you know, reducing roadway widths, um, instead of just having minimum po- parking, maybe have maximums. Or look at shared parking, ways to try to reduce impervious area, having onsite. Water percolation like, uh, bio swales, or other ways for. The water not to run off into the roadway or into a storm system.
Do you have any models or templates for that?
One of my colleagues just wrote an L I D bylaw for Boylston.
Right, I was gonna say, Boylston does have a stormwater bylaw.
Standalone bylaw outside of the zoning bylaw?
Yep.
Which has advantages for passage at town meeting, obviously. But not necessarily outside of our purview.
And then the, the. Low impact development. I- is that a, is that a standalone document, or is that just language that's incorporated throughout the zoning?
It can be either of those. It can be part of stormwater also, because I see them as being related. Um, in a sense, because you're, you're looking to create development that does not have an impact on the environment. So stormwater is part of it.
Uh, okay.
I think both of those would be great.
And, and erosion control standards end up incorporated into that whole. Conversation as well?
Um, I, I just automatically think of it more as something that's part of subdivision. Regulations, but I, I can take a look at that.
So the commission's developing a, a model generic subdivision control law.
Oh, okay.
Right?
Yes.
I mean, we, we gave money from D L T A.
Yes, Mike, and Mike has worked on that. It's just about done. I've seen an internal draft.
So. Has that addressed some like, is, is erosion control incorporated into that, do you think?
I can take a look. It's a long document, so I don't remember every detail offhand.
Cuz we had said we were interested in, in that project, and. I think they, the decision was made to limit it to a smaller number of towns, so we didn't get actively engaged, but um.
I think the other issue was that you can't be considered for two separate E A grants.
Right.
So, um, I think the preference was for the zoning update.
Yeah. So. I think, you know, we're gonna wanna look at that. And, and see what parts of these comments that you've made in regard to the. Diagnostic get passed over into the subdivision control law as opposed to being incorporated into the zoning bylaw, and then what. Ones might be standalone, more related to the Conservation Commission, I guess, so.
Ah, okay.
That's, I, I, but I, I think we wanna, we wanna integrate these, but they may be in different silos to some degree. I guess, right?
Sure.
Um, I, I've always felt that our section on definitions is particularly weak, and I think you mentioned that. And. Part of me wonders if there aren't just some great examples from other towns that have. Really developed a complete list of definitions that might be. Um, cut and paste almost for us to use in, you know, there are some that are specific to our town. That relate to some of the overlay districts for the malls and stuff like that, but.
Yeah.
Um, do you find that? There's a, there's a generic enough list of definitions that towns can incorporate into their bylaw that. Helps them be compliant with some of the, the views the state might take, or courts might take.
So as we've been working with different towns, we've been making recommendations, um. Such as moving all of the definitions to one section, so you can find them all. Um, we're also recommending that things like the marijuana definitions are all updated per state law. There've been some changes with the solar laws. Uh, now we've got A D U definitions, and um, let me see. So a lot of it is just make, and we usually will go through, um, chapter forty-eight. Uh, the definition section, and to see if there's any new ones there, and whether they apply to a particular town or not, and if so, we'll. Recommend that those be included as well, but it's, it's a combination of sources that we look at. And then some of it is we go through the existing document, and we'll find that there's some terminology that's used, but it's not in the definition, so. It might be good to clarify, um, exactly what we're referring to by creating a definition for it.
I mean, the, the Z B A has certainly been frustrated with the zoning bylaw from time to time, and they've come to us with suggestions for. Um, inclusion in the definition section that would help them.
I'd love to hear that, what.
There are times when. You know, you, you wonder about defining something so concretely that it gets in your way later on.
And then sometimes defining it too loosely.
Right.
Also gets in the way.
Yeah. So it's a double edged sword. You know?
Um, you had mentioned something about an update with the solar laws. Uh, does that. Cover battery storage facilities?
Uh, yeah, that's one of the big changes.
Right, cuz I, cuz we had mentioned looking at that also, so.
And my understanding was that Pittsfield has had their bylaw approved. I don't know if any others have since then. But for a while, it was difficult for any community to get their battery energy storage bylaw passed.
Could you send us an, the Pittsfield example?
Yeah.
So.
That'd be great.
Past, you mean past locally or passed by the Attorney General?
By the Attorney General.
Okay.
Some other communities.
Are they generally bylaws that allow it or disallow it?
I believe they limit locations. And for the most part, what I've heard is fire departments are really concerned about. The difficulty in putting out the lithium battery fires. And towns are also concerned about the aesthetics of all of these storage containers. And what that does aesthetically to a community.
Sure.
We can, we can disguise them as cottage housing, no problem.
Uh, the police chief, I mean, the fire chief is been, um, engaged a couple times in conversations about. You, you know, what his view would be, and, and if he's come up with some ideas. Given this correspondence with other fire chiefs, so I think he's very eager to engage in the conversation, so that. That would be helpful.
I know, uh, the Spencer Fire Department, I believe, sponsored an event at Anna Maria College. Uh, six, eight months ago or so, uh, where a lot of fire. Uh, personnel went, uh, to carry a talk about dealing with battery energy storage.
I, I had a customer in here the other day who's been dealing with batteries for a long time, and, and, uh. He's working with a company in Buffalo right now, and they're applying some new, new approaches and new technology, and as a result. Diminish significantly the fire risk, because the.
Really?
Cells end up, well, I mean, essentially, it's a bunch of individual batteries, right? So, I mean, it's. That, what happens is each one sort of distinct, extinguishes itself if there's a problem, and. And the chain reaction that you get with the systems now, um, gets eliminated, so I, he's, he's hopeful. And I said, that'd be great.
Yeah, right?
So I said, what you're saying is Berlin ought not to allow batteries for a little while longer, and he said, well, you know. If, you may see technology catch up fast enough, so that, you know, in eighteen months, two years, you might be in a position where you'd say, wow. This would work, so.
By the time we get our act together, you mean?
Yeah.
As long as they're adequately screened.
Yeah.
There were a couple, like, when you talked about a demolition delay bylaw, we, we do have a demolition delay bylaw now.
That was, I believe, uh, recommendation from one of the previous plans?
Is that what it was?
It might have been the reconnaissance survey.
Huh, cuz that's, I know Historic Commission's got a, a delay of six months.
Oh, wow.
I think it's, I don't think it's a hundred and twenty days. I think it was longer.
Groton is a hundred and eighty days. I think it's Groton. There was a music facility in Groton. Uh, I don't know what their plans are for the property, but there's a forty-eight hundred square foot colonial on the property that they wanted to demo. Um, and because of the demo delay bylaw, they had to try to find alternative plans to demolishing it. So they were offering it for free, uh, you just have to move it, but. Try and find land and try and move a forty-eight hundred square foot house. So their deadline has passed, so the poor house is probably gone.
Did you look at, there was a Route sixty-two corridor study done for us. Did, did you have a chance to see that?
Was Kerry involved in that?
No, it was.
That was the village center.
Transportation crew.
Okay. I don't recall seeing that one.
Um, but I know you, there's some mention in here about culverts and, and, and things like that, and that. That tries to address some of those issues, so it might be worthwhile just grabbing a hold of a copy of that. That was done like. Two years ago, probably. Uh, but it identified the five corners that. in the western part of the town by the railroad tracks on sixty two the center village and the intersection of Gates Pond Road and sixty two by Highland Commons is three points of interest, but it also spoke about the culvert issue all along, particularly sixty two west of the center. And there was some assessments done there.
Okay.
Because the, I guess, the municipal vulnerability prepared, you know, they they spoke about that in twenty
Okay.
That that studies more recent, the sixty two corridor studies more recent, so.
Okay.
And FEMA was, there's a woman at FEMA that's worked, that's reached out to us to Jay knows more about this than the rest of us, I think. We were just talking about this in regard to the floodplain.
So my contact had been with D C R rather than FEMA.
Was was your contact FEMA junior or D C R? Jay's gone.
Mine, let's see here, D C R.
Okay.
So that was Katie.
Kate. Kate.
A G H B A I G H T.
That's exactly who I dealt with.
And and so Jay, if if she's given us some highlighted comments on our floodplain bylaw, we probably want to send that to Jane.
Absolutely.
Because she did a little, I guess, a little critique, right?
Yeah, she went through and commented the whole section.
Yeah, she's done that for another town that I've worked with and wanted to update it to be in compliance with the state model floodplain bylaw. Any other comments?
I I've got a lot of little things, but I mean, those are the key points that I thought I wanted to share.
Thank you for that. We would be really surprised if you did not get the E E A funding.
What's your, it's because now we're at the end of this November, what you you figure in the next couple of weeks or?
I would hope any day now. All of the one stop awards have been announced.
You haven't heard of any E E A grants, though?
No, I can check with Dominique tomorrow if you'd like. She seems to be more in the know on that part.
I mean, I I guess the thought was that Kristen would get notified before you guys would, right? I mean, Kristen was the applicant, right? So.
Yeah.
Hopefully she hasn't heard and is holding us in suspense, right? No, that would be great. So I, before you joined us, I mean, we talked about again what I said, that we're going to reach out to Thomas is going to generate some thoughts that we'll share with town council, then we'll meet with town council. We'll try to catch up with Meredith and Marlboro and then based on those conversations, I think we'll try to get you included in some of that conversation so that if we look at that section of the bylaw, if it's going to be revamped.
Okay. I remember the last time we met, the group had gone over a list of potential uses that Marlboro was considering and I didn't know if you all had come to any conclusion on whether you would be in agreement with following in that similar direction.
It's those are those are modifications to the underlying zoning.
Oh, okay.
And our questions are which which I don't think and correct me if I'm wrong, any members of the board that we're, we think are too broad and so consequently, I think we're we're probably focusing on the overlay zone and doing the things that Tim just described in terms of trying to coordinate with Marlboro to make the overlay zoning more attractive that it will kind of swamp their underlying
Hmm.
zoning changes, yeah. Um, so I think that's, I mean, you know, that may change. It depends upon our conversations with Marlboro, but I think that's our, you know, that's our current going forward plan.
We did go through that list that Marlboro approved for uses, but as I think we've said a couple of times, it's that's only one part of the conversation. It's there's a whole series of other issues that need to be addressed.
And the underlying zoning is frankly, you know, I mean, it's it's throwing the whole bowl of spaghetti at the wall. I mean, it's just like.
Right. But there were certainly uses on that list that we weren't I I we, I think we were pretty confident that if we went town meeting with those, a number of those wouldn't be palatable for the populace, so we.
No, no, absolutely. You know, what I what I said was we couldn't. We certainly couldn't for the next annual town meeting take to the town meeting changes to the underlying zoning that were consistent with that. I mean, it's just like, so so I think, again, we're focusing on making the overlay zone hopefully economically more attractive that that underlying zone will become irrelevant at this point, that that's the plan going forward. We'll see how it goes.
So the next step is see what E E A says and then we'll circle back as we learn a little more in our conversations with town council and Marlboro and then.
Okay.
And then the cottage, the the A D U's, you you suspect we'll get some language model out of the state which would pass muster with the Attorney General, so we can look at that more closely in January or whatever and
Right.
if it comes out that soon, I would think it would, right? I think.
I I would hope so if it goes into effect February second.
Right. I mean, I think that's their goal, right, is to really.
So, I mean, you've probably seen that C M R P C is hosting another peer to peer workshop. We had one about a month ago during the daytime. We also want to have one in the evening. So planning board members and others who are working during the day can attend. And that, I believe, will be sometime around December tenth, maybe. Uh, let me double check that date. Uh, but Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, they've brought on an A D U specialist or coordinator um, who's reached out to us to see if we would like any support from them at that workshop, and we're like, yes. And they, uh, and they're offering to share any updates that they have. So that's going to be an opportunity to get the latest and greatest from them.
Will that be a remote meeting?
Yes.
So our next meeting is December tenth. So if it is.
Didn't you just move it to the night?
Oh, no, that's that's a very particular meeting for for one particular item, yeah.
Yeah, town meetings the nine.
Okay. Yeah, let me see. I just got an email about that a little while ago. If I can get the date on that. It is December tenth.
Do you know what time?
Uh. This email is not showing it. Let me check my calendar.
So they haven't, have they sent out an invitation to delegates on that yet? No.
You know, I would think it was probably in the recent newsletter that just came out a few days ago. I'm showing it at six P M.
Okay.
I can send a link for that, too.
That would be great.
Mm hmm.
Thanks.
What time is your meeting, seven thirty?
Yeah.
Oh, so you might be able to catch that.
No, and and then if we planned it ahead, I don't suspect we're going to have a lot of business on the agenda. We could do a later, shorter meeting.
Hmm, okay.
And spend the first few minutes of it talking about what we just went to.
Yeah, I think it's a valuable
Yeah.
meeting to attend.
Mm hmm.
So we had allowed an hour and a half for the first one that we held. There were some, I I forget how many people were in attendance. It was an awful lot, and there were a lot of questions and um, I believe the meeting went like ten or fifteen minutes over just because we were trying to get to all the questions. And some of them, when you register for the the webinar, uh, we offer for you to send in your questions ahead of time. That way we can get all the answers ready in the interest of time. But it was running so late that we decided that we would just send everybody the written responses and just answer the live questions during the meeting because there's no way we would have gotten through everything that was that popular.
Okay, so this starts at what you said, six?
Six P M.
Six P M.
Mm hmm.
And lasted an hour and a half?
The last one did.
So that's seven thirty.
How many people are there? How many questions are asked?
Mm hmm. So maybe what we should do is post our meeting for eight o'clock and try to, you know, I I don't suspect in December, we're going to get a lot of other meeting, other things on the agenda. Maybe we should do that, guys.
I it, should we make a motion right now?
I would move that.
Second.
Yeah, I have a motion in a second to hold our meeting on the tenth at eight P M. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask you to vote. Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Jay Teach.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
Tom Samp and aye. Motion carries unanimous. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
All right. We'll be there.
Excellent.
All right.
Anybody else have any questions for?
I went to the first, that first peer to peer meeting. It was very informative.
You listened to the person?
Yeah, it was good. There were a couple developers talk about projects they were doing, one up in Harvard. Squeezing a lot of little homes onto a former farm.
One of the gentlemen who attended the last workshop was a building inspector or a building official from Northborough. And he provided a lot of really good information from the building code standpoint regarding A D U's. And I know that E O H L C is having a special session with building officials. I I I think more so to hear from them what their concerns are and how to make sure that the A D U regulations are not going to conflict with building code.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's been one of our concerns all along is how it 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 not conflicting with Title V.
Right.
For us.
Yeah, you would have to meet Title V. You can um, require reasonable restrictions like setbacks or height limits. Um, you can require, you know, only one driveway, not a second driveway for the second unit if you don't want extra curb cuts. But as long as it's considered reasonable.
Mm hmm.
And considering something reasonable is that the justification for the ask is a reasonable justification? Like excess curb cuts or?
Yeah.
I'm just wondering how the, how reasonable is defined?
That's a legal term.
Yeah.
Oh. Reasonable person view that.
Yeah.
Yeah, well.
Believe me, it's ultimately going to be determined by the courts, but I think the point is you have to have a material concern that justifies it. And you have to document that if you're doing it, you know, so.
Correct. That was, that was kind of what I was getting at.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I I was with you.
Yeah. I felt you right there, Tom.
Yeah.
I just sent the link for registration to the meeting to everybody.
Oh, great. Thank you.
But Tom, everything seems, sometimes it bounces back from you, so if someone else can forward it to Tom.
Tom Sanford or Tom Andrew?
Tom Andrew. I I I asked, I sent something around the other day and it bounced back a couple of times and it couldn't.
I'll send you my email, but it should. Um, are you using, have you been sending it to B V H and Co?
No, your other one.
Okay. Yeah, because sometimes things get caught up in the span at the business email, but I'll I'll send it to you again. This, I don't think there's any reason why it shouldn't be bouncing back, but.
Right, but if somebody would send it to Tom, too, that would be good.
I know that Outlook has been having a lot of problems the last couple of days.
Yeah. Great.
Well, thank you so much for all of the feedback and I will make those updates to that table on the priority development areas and get a clean copy back to you. And I will see if Dominique has heard anything else about E E A.
Like chewing his nails.
Yeah, she said, Dominique has said, we've gotten pretty much everything we've applied for, and she would be really surprised that one stop is a lot more competitive. So and when I will also send out the Pittsfield Battery Energy Storage by law. And I will review the Route sixty two corridor study. I think that was all of my homework.
Mm hmm.
Okay.
Light reading.
Sounds great.
Yes.
Awesome.
Thank you so much and look forward to getting to work with all of you on this. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Bye bye.
Bye bye. Is there anything else that we have?
I think that's it, isn't it?
Well, then, may I say, may I suggest that we give each other fifteen minutes of our lives back in Thanksgiving for working together as a committee over over this year. That's a motion.
Second.
Hey, I got a motion in a second. It's non discussable, so I'll ask you to vote. Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Jay Teach.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
Tom Samp and aye. Motion carries the unanimous.